All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to get started. Thank you all for joining us tonight. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Moriarty. I am the Deputy Commissioner for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, and I will be the hearing officer for tonight's public hearing. This hearing is being held to receive oral and written comments on the proposed environmental justice rulemaking, which implements the environmental justice law. In September 2020, Governor Murphy signed New Jersey's landmark environmental justice law, the first of its kind in the nation's most empowering environmental justice legislation. The environmental justice law recognizes that because
Environmental standards.
Okay. Try again. Okay, there we go. Because, don't touch the bottom of the microphone. Because environmental standards are often formulated based on the effect pollution has upon general population spread over wide geographic areas, existing environmental laws fail to fully consider the impacts that certain pollution generating facilities may have on their local communities. This failure has led to pockets of high pollution across New Jersey, where many pollution generating facilities have become concentrated in predominantly minority and low-income communities that may lack the financial and political power to shape their local landscape and avoid disproportionate adverse impacts upon their public health and environment. At its most basic, the law requires us to consider whether a specific facility seeking a specific type of permit will contribute to environmental and public health stressors in an overburdened community, considering whether and how those stressors might have a disproportionate impact when compared to the overburdened community's neighbors. A comparative analysis. The law requires the department to assess relevant environmental and public health stressors affecting New Jersey's overburdened communities, and to deny or condition permits for certain facilities that cannot avoid causing or contributing to adverse environmental or public health stressors in those communities. The law applies where three criteria are met. First, the facility is located or proposed to be located in an overburdened community. Second, the proposed or existing facility is one of the eight types of facilities listed in the act, which include major sources of air pollution, as well as most solid waste facilities. Third, the applicant must be seeking one of the types of permits from the department covered by the act. Where the environmental justice law and the rules apply, an applicant must submit an environmental justice impact statement, or EJIS, to the department evaluating how the proposed action, whether a new facility, renewal of a major source of air pollution, or the expansion of the existing facility, would contribute to environmental and public health stressors in the host community. The EJIS must also address how the applicant proposes to avoid, and where avoidance is not feasible, minimize such impacts, and under circumstances, provide a net environmental or public health benefit to the overburdened community. The EJIS is made available to the public in advance of the public hearing. To ensure meaningful public participation of the members of the overburdened community, an applicant is required to hold a public hearing in the overburdened community to present the proposed project and the EJIS, with a public comment period of at least 60 days to provide an opportunity for feedback from those most potentially affected by the proposed project. Notice and materials would be made available in language that's accessible to community members, and the applicant would be required to address all comments received at the hearing or in writing as part of its submission to the department. The department will evaluate the EJIS and the information presented at the public hearing and through public comment to determine whether additional environmental or public health stressors expected from the actions in the permit application would, together with the baseline stressors already impacting the community, cause or contribute to adverse cumulative environmental or public health stressors in that overburdened community that are higher than those of the non-overburdened communities in the state. If that is the case, a disproportionate impact would be present, and the department may deny the permit or approve it with conditions that avoid or minimize those impacts. On June 6, 2022, the department proposed rules in New Jersey Register to implement the environmental justice law. The public comment period on this proposal closes on September 4, 2022. As indicated in the published notice, written comments are to be submitted electronically to www nj.gov/dep/comments, or to Melissa Bedamarko at the address set forth in the notice. All relevant comments received during the public comment period will be addressed in New Jersey Register, should the department adopt this rule. The public hearing on this rule proposal is being held in accordance with the Administrative Procedures Act, and as required, the department has provided additional notice at this public hearing through the department's website, through electronic mail, and through written communication with a number of news outlets. Now, the goal of this hearing is to receive verbal comments into the record concerning the rule proposal. The hearing is not intended to be a question-and-answer session, but rather an opportunity for interested parties, interested individuals like yourselves, to voice your concerns and suggestions regarding the rulemaking. If you've not yet done so, we ask you to please sign the attendance sheet at the front of the room and indicate whether you're interested in speaking tonight. We're now going to begin in a second inviting individuals up, but first we want to make an announcement regarding Spanish translation for anyone who may find that beneficial. Should be on. Okay. Si alguien quiere que repongamos una grabación de la declaración de apertura en español, por favor levanta la mano. Just in case, we're asking if anyone would like to hear the opening statement in Spanish, please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am?
Someone raised. Yeah? Sorry, it clears out the window. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sean Moriarty. Soy el comisionado adjunto del Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Nueva Jersey. Seré el oficial encargado de la audiencia pública. Esta audiencia se lleva a cabo para recibir comentarios orales y escritos sobre la propuesta de declaración de justicia ambiental adecuada a la Ley de Justicia Ambiental. El gobernador Murphy tenió en cuestión en el 2020 la histórica Ley de Justicia Ambiental de Nueva Jersey, la primera de este tipo y la legislación de justicia ambiental más fuerte de París. La Ley de Justicia Ambiental reconoce que las leyes ambientales existentes no tienen en cuenta plenamente los impactos desiertos de establecimientos generadores de contaminación tienen en sus comunidades locales, debido a que las normas ambientales suele conlocarse con base en el efecto que la comunidad tiene sobre poblaciones semitanas en dispersas y amplias poblaciones gráficas. Y este fracaso ha creado pocos de alta contaminación en toda Nueva Jersey, donde muchos establecimientos generadores de contaminación se han concentrado en comunidades principalmente minoritarias y de bajos ingresos, que pueden parecer de poder financiero y político para dar forma a su fracaso local y evitar impactos terrestres y desproporcionados en la salud pública y en la mediodía. Es poco más básica, la ley nos obliga a considerar si un establecimiento específico que el solicitante tipo específico de permiso contribuya a los factores de estrés ambiental o de salud pública en una comunidad sobrecargada, teniendo en cuenta que esos factores de estrés pudieran tener un impacto desproporcionado al compararlos con los vecinos de la comunidad sobrecargada, algo así como un análisis comparativo. La ley requiere que el Departamento de Protección Ambiental de Nueva Jersey evalúe los factores de estrés ambiental y de salud pública más importantes que afectan a las comunidades sobrecargadas de Nueva Jersey, y que nieguen o condicione los servicios desiertos de establecimientos que no pueden evitar, causar o contribuir a los factores de estrés ambiental o de salud pública a presocen dichas comunidades. La ley se aplica si se pone tres criterios: uno, el establecimiento subyuta o propone indicarse en una comunidad sobrecargada, OBC por sus siglas en inglés; dos, el establecimiento propuesto o existente es uno de los ocho tipos de establecimientos enumerados en la ley, como una fuente importante de contaminación atmosférica, un establecimiento de chacara o un perdedero; tres, el solicitante busca un tipo de permiso o promoción del Departamento de Protección de Nueva Jersey cubierto por la ley. Cuando se aplica la Ley de Justicia Ambiental, el solicitante deberá presentar una declaración de impacto sobre justicia ambiental y ICHES por sus siglas en inglés al Departamento de Protección de Nueva Jersey, donde se evalúe el modo en el que la contaminación propuesta y hacia un nuevo establecimiento, la renovación de una nueva fuente importante de contaminación atmosférica, o la expansión de un establecimiento existente contribuirá a los factores de estrés ambiental y de salud pública en la comunidad. La ICHES también debe aportar la forma en que el solicitante propone evitar, y cuando no sea posible evitarlo, minimizar dichos impactos, y en determinadas circunstancias proporcionar un beneficio ambiental o de salud pública dentro a la comunidad sobrecargada. La ICHES se podrá a disposición del público antes de la audiencia pública. El solicitante debe organizar una audiencia pública en la comunidad afectada para presentar el proyecto propuesto a la ICHES, a fin de garantizar una participación pública significativa de los miembros de la comunidad sobrecargada, incluyendo un periodo de comentarios típicos de al menos 60 días para dar la oportunidad de recibir comentarios de los más afectados por el proyecto propuesto. Las notificaciones y los materiales se podrán a disposición en los idiomas accesibles para los miembros de la comunidad, y el solicitante tendrá que responder a todos sus comentarios El departamento evaluará la ICHES para la información que se dada de la audiencia pública y a través de los comentarios del público para determinar si los factores tradicionales de estrés ambiental o de salud pública se esperan en las acciones en la solicitud propuesto junto con la línea de base de los factores de estrés que ya impactan a la comunidad causan o contribuyen a los factores de estrés ambientales o de salud pública acumulativos y adversos en esta OBC, que son más altos en comparación a las comunidades del estado que no son OBCs. De ser así, se producirá un impacto desproporcionado, y el departamento podrá negar el permiso o aprobarlo con condiciones que imiten o minimizan esos impactos. El 6 de junio de 2022, el departamento propuso una serie de reglas en el registro de Nueva Jersey para aplicar la Ley de Justicia Ambiental. El periodo de comentarios títulos de estas propuestas se hicieran el 4 de septiembre de 2022. Como se indicó en el anuncio público, los comentarios, por ejemplo, deben ir siendo únicamente a nuestra web site, www nj.gov/dep/comments, o a Melissa Bedamarko, DEPTALKET05-22-04. Offices of Environmental Affairs, Department of Environmental Protection, 401 East Street, South Floor, North Code, 401-04L, Kilo Bus, 402, Transit Jersey, 08625-0402. Los comentarios irrelevantes que se perciban durante el periodo de comentarios públicos se incluirán en el registro de Nueva Jersey en caso de que el departamento adopte esta propuesta de regla. La audiencia pública sobre la propuesta de regla se celebra de acuerdo con la Ley de Procedimientos Administrativos, y como es debido, el departamento ha proporcionado una notificación adicional a esta audiencia pública a través de su página web, a través de este foro electrónico, y mediante comunicación escrita con una serie de medios de comunicación. El objetivo de la audiencia es recibir comentarios perpares para que consten por escrito en relación con la propuesta de norma. La audiencia no pretende ser una sesión de preguntas y respuestas, sino más bien una oportunidad para que las personas interesadas expresen sus preocupaciones y sugerencias con respecto a la normativa. Si todavía no lo ha hecho, firme la hoja de resistencia e indique si está interesado en participar en la audiencia de esta noche. A partir de ahora, comenzaremos a invitar a las personas que han solicitado una oportunidad para participar. Cuando se pronuncie su nombre, acérquese al micrófono, diga su nombre, y te entregó para el taqueada. Le pedimos que limite sus comentarios a tres minutos. Si hay tiempo adicional después de que todos hayan hablado, pueden dar testimonio por tres minutos más. Gracias.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to now begin inviting individuals up to the microphone based on the order which folks signed in. We'd ask you, when you step up, to please state your name and spell for the record. We're also asking you to limit your comments to three minutes. If there is additional time after everyone's spoken, we'll certainly provide an opportunity for folks to speak again. If you haven't indicated that you'd like to speak on the signage sheet, it will be an opportunity at the end to come up and share your thoughts. I mean, also a reminder, this is the third of five public hearings we'll be doing. We'll have a public hearing in two weeks in Newark, and we'll also be having a virtual hearing in two weeks. So anyone who has continued interest here, we ask you to please look at that schedule, and if you want to join us there, please do so as well.
All right, so I'm going to project, since we have one microphone. First on the list is Mr. Ray Kanter.
Do I need to spell my name?
I think we know you.
Okay, fine.
Thank you, Ray.
Good evening. My name is Ray Kanter. I am a Vice President of Government Affairs for the New Jersey Business and Industry Association. I appreciate the opportunity you afforded me to be here tonight and to speak on this rule. I think it's appropriate that we are here in Camden, because I think Camden is an example of what an effective environmental justice program can accomplish. Through the Department's CCI, Community Collaborative Initiative Program, we have seen real progress, real results, you know, in the city of Camden. Ten years ago, school children used to have to walk through overflowed stormwater facilities containing waste in order to get to school. That was fixed by efforts of DEP through the CCI. This center, the CROCK Center, was helped build through efforts of the CCI. Harrison landfill next door used to be a polluted site, is now a vibrant park, you know, on the waterfront. Waterfront development has happened in Camden, bringing in good-paying jobs into the city, all things resulting from a concerted effort of DEP through the CCI. I even saw coming in that there were new houses being built right across the street. Again, an example of what could happen if we do things right, if we are result-oriented. Unfortunately, we believe that this rule proposed, you know, in its current form, will not have similar results. The rule is more form over substance. It falls back on a command and control scenario, where very prescriptive requirements are put in place in order to get minor environmental benefits. We could do a lot more in this rule if we are a little bit more flexible, if we look to see how we can actually improve communities versus what requirements we could place on facilities. We believe at the end of the day, if this rule is adopted as it's currently proposed, we will not see the benefits that people are looking for. What we will see is less development or good-paying jobs coming into certain areas, and we may be seeing jobs actually leave. I'm aware of at least one facility that has come to me, and they are a major facility that has multiple places in different states. Their corporate headquarters or their corporation is going to build another facility somewhere, probably in another state. They are debating right now whether to expand a New Jersey facility, or make the new facility in another state larger, and then ultimately close down the New Jersey facility. And they're doing that because they don't know if the cost, the uncertainty, the requirements of this EJ law is going to make it unaffordable, unattractive to develop and expand here in New Jersey. So again, we understand the department's intent, we support that intent, but we would prefer the department be less prescriptive, more results-oriented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray. Next I have, and I apologize in advance if I mess people's names up, I'm notoriously poor with this, but Lori Kaufman?
Can you hear me with my mask on?
Yes, ma'am.
Good, because I didn't want to take it off because I'm COVID-concerned.
Understood.
Hi, I'm Lori Kaufman, C-A-U-G-H-M-A-N. I'm with the New Jersey Environmental Justice Alliance, and I'm here to talk about this regulation. I think it's a good start. I think it can be stronger. But what I'm most concerned about is what I'm hearing in regards to the compelling public interest part. Evidently, businesses are trying to indicate that they think we need to let go of the economic considerations in regards to why their plant cannot go in that area, and I would say, no. That is exactly why they're always in these areas, and the communities in which they sit in never have a response. Their excuse is always, we will bring good jobs. Most of the times, the jobs they bring are not held by people that live in those communities. I should know, I live in one. I was raised in Raleigh. The incinerator is less than a thousand feet from where I grew up. None of us worked there. None of us asked for it, and both my mother and my neighbor died of cancer just recently. We've had other people die of cancer. Our lives are worth more than a tax consideration or some, we'll bring good jobs. That is also the excuse that they use in Cancer Island down in Louisiana. It's going to bring jobs. It's bought death. It seems to me that the people that live there should be the ones to determine whether it actually is beneficial for them, and not people who do not live there, do not reside there, do not have loved ones there. I'll just leave you with this concept. My grandfather was a coal miner in West Virginia. He died of cancer, because UMW, which I'm a great supporter of, knew that was what was going to happen to the so-called good jobs that coal miners had. His money only went to my grandmother. He never saw a dime of it. She had great healthcare, but she would have rather have had her husband. I would have rather have had my grandfather. There is no reason that black and brown lives are worth less than white privileged males and women. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next I have Elowyn Corby?
Hello, my name is Elowyn Corby, E-L-O-W-Y-N-C-O-R-B-Y. I'm the Mid-Atlantic Regional Director for Vote Solar. I oversee our work in New Jersey to fight for a 100% clean energy transition that puts the interest, health, and well-being of people at its center. I'm here to voice Vote Solar's strong support for the proposed rules and to applaud the environmental justice groups whose leadership has allowed us to reach this milestone. This is a victory for all New Jerseans, especially for communities of color and low-income communities who have disproportionately borne the burdens and received fewer of the benefits of our energy system. First, I want to celebrate some key provisions from the draft rules, which we feel strongly should be preserved. The rules are very clear on what is meant by contributing to a stressor. Any increase, no matter how small, is a contribution. This is common sense, easily determined, and appropriately stringent when community health and well-being are at stake. There are three key requirements in place that help prevent the public good exemption from undermining the law's impact, since the public good can be interpreted very broadly in the absence of clear guidance. First, that the public good must accrue to the host community rather than society more broadly. Second, that economic benefits and job creation within an otherwise harmful industry are explicitly not considered sufficient public good. The speaker before me very clearly articulated and persuasively articulated why that is so important. And finally, that the public good must be the primary purpose of the facility rather than some secondary benefit. In addition to celebrating these important provisions, there are a few sections of the rules that I believe can and should be strengthened. First, residents of host communities should have meaningful input into what qualifies as a public good for their own community, rather than leaving that decision with local governments or outside bodies. Next, the number of required local hearings for each permit application should be increased, and there should be flexibility with regards to the type of comments that are allowed, for instance, voice messages or videos. And finally, applicants for new facility permits should be required to conduct meaningful community outreach, not just through newspapers, but also online, through automated phone calls, and in collaboration with local community centers, schools, and churches. In closing, I reiterate Vote Solar's strong support for these rules, and I am grateful for the leadership of environmental justice groups that have gotten us to this point and for the opportunity to witness this historic victory firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Ortega?
My name is Daniel Ortega, O-R-T-E-G-A. I am with the Operating Engineers Local 825. We have over 8,000 members in the state of New Jersey, and we have over 1,000 signatory contractors. As we plan our state future, it is important that we take all factors into account, not just the ones we want, but the ones that make a better Twitter. And we also should be able to consider some of the followings. How do we protect the environment for generations to come? How do we ensure our economy is strong for the long term? What are we doing to provide good jobs in a long-term economy? And how do we balance development and see our communities' drive? Under these proposed rules, almost two-thirds of the state of New Jersey is designated as being overburdened, and over 90% of those areas will be determined to have disproportionately impact. Progress is good, however. I like to leave unicorns and rainbows to my daughters, who are three and four. In other words, the type of economic advantage that we're trying to seek for this state, such as advanced manufacturing and supply chain, will be halted entirely. University expansions, transportation centers, economic opportunities, and even healthcare centers are now at risk or of being blocked. This is not progress. From the very beginning, when this law and now these regulations were proposed, our organization has testified that this is going to do more harm than good, and needed to be overhauled significantly. Those comments were ignored. We're here again today to tell you that these regulations would do more harm than good and completely miss the mark of finding a balance between economic development, opportunity, and community protections. It is our hope that the state will listen this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ken Riley?
My name is Ken Riley, R-I-L-Y. I'm a lifelong resident of Camden County. For close to 20 years, I have been a member of the IUOE Local 825. Over the years, as a heavy equipment operator, I have become an expert in excavators, demolition, pipeline, construction, among other areas of the construction industry. I'm here today to express my concerns about the state's environmental justice law. Progress is not always a straight line. The road out of these regulations feels hurried and missing the point. For too long, the basic infrastructure in our communities has been neglected. Updates and/or the construction of new schools, clean water, sewage systems, supermarkets, medical facilities, and transportation centers are now at risk because of these new rules. Places that have been giving Camden County residents good work opportunities for closure and layoffs to their workers because they will not be able to do the necessary upgrades or expansions needed in the future. Of course, we must continue to find ways to safeguard the environment and make sure that the voices of minority communities are heard, but we also have to maintain the long-term economic stability of communities these rules are set to protect. This process needs to be much more inclusive and truly integrate all aspects and points of the view of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Minister Roy L. Jones, I believe?
I'm with two churches, Community Baptist Church, formerly in Camden and now in Collinswood, and also Mount Zion Baptist Church. I'm also the Executive Director of the National Institute for Healthy Human Spaces. I have been involved in environmental justice in the city of Camden for 50 years. This was Camden's landfill that we're sitting in tonight. You can see what can happen when change occurs, but I want to make something very clear. I want what folk in Cherry Hill want for their families: clean neighborhoods, good jobs, good-paying jobs. Clean neighborhoods, good jobs, good-paying jobs, police protection, and to determine what happens in my neighborhood. I want what people in Cherry Hill want, in Morristown want, Collinswood want. I want a clean environment in the city of Camden. In Camden County, 27 towns. Camden is a national environmental disgrace. It is the worst, one of the worst communities environmentally affected in the state of New Jersey. Some facts. Camden has 168 known contaminated sites. Cherry Hill, four. Haddonfield, zero. Camden, 168. We have a regional sewer treatment plant that stinks up the whole neighborhood 24 hours a day, 365 days of the year. All of the sewage from all the 27 towns in Camden County comes to Camden. We smell it. We have to live with it, and we have to endure it. Some more facts. We have a trash incinerator plant. And the EPA has described them as the number-one environmental polluter, industrial polluter, in Camden County. We have the largest scrap metal plants in the region of South Jersey, located in a poor, working-class neighborhood like Camden. It doesn't exist in Cherry Hill. It doesn't exist in Morristown. I want what people want for their families in Cherry Hill and in Morristown. I want the same thing for my family. I do not want my family to die early because of cancer. I do not want my family to die early because of diesel trucks bringing in spludge and all kinds of scrap metal stuff from all over the region. I don't want that for my family. I want the same thing everybody else wants in this nation. A better, cleaner, dynamic environment. I hope people can appreciate that. This issue of jobs, there is no comparison. There is no balance between death and a job. There's no, there's no balance between having a job and thousands of people and young people dying. There's no balance. I want what Cherry Hill people want. I don't want EMR, Covantor, the trash steam plant, the sewer treatment plant in my neighborhood. I don't want it. I want what they want in Cherry Hill and in Morristown. I want the same thing to live in a wholesome environment. I hope people can appreciate that. As to the jobs that people want to put in front of us, oh, we can count the number of people from Camden of color that work at EMR and Covantor and all of these other polluting companies. We can count the people that look like me that live in this neighborhood. So we can trot out everybody we want and talk about jobs and a better environment. And yet, this city is inundated. From a health standpoint, people are dying. I hope you can appreciate that. I want what every human being wants for their family. And I'm compelled, as a minister, to talk about justice. I want, I want to treat you the same way you treat me. I don't want your neighborhoods to be better than mine. It should be the same. So if it's good for Cherry Hill, it should be good for Camden. So who want, in Cherry Hill and Morristown, want to take all of the polluting industries back to Cherry Hill and Morristown? Who want, who in this room want that? Because we can start a movement to move all the polluting facilities from Camden to Cherry Hill and Morristown and Haddonfield. We can start a movement to do that. So I-
I apologize.
Yes, sir.
We are past the three.
Yes.
I am very reluctant to cut you off, and I appreciate everything you're saying.
No problem. But in closing-
Thank you.
Justice demand this passion for me. I am tired of people and young people dying of cancer, asthma attacks, and all kinds of other illness from toxic waste and burned materials that are killing our people in the city of Camden. I want what you want in Cherry Hill, Haddonfield, Collinswood, and Lawnside. I want the same thing you want. You wouldn't want it in your neighborhood because it's not in your neighborhood.
Thank you, Minister. Dr. Nikki Sheets.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Sorry to follow that. Nikki Sheets, New Jersey, EJ Alliance, Kane University. Overall, we think the rule is good. Unfortunately, in New Jersey, as we just pointed out, there's an association-
Speaking to the microphone.
Unfortunately, in New Jersey, there's an association between race, income, and the amount of pollution in your neighborhood. As the number of people of color in the neighborhood increases, as the number of low-income people living in the neighborhood increases, so does the amount of pollution. And this is unacceptable. And we have to do something to break it. And this law is a good first step. What we're afraid of is that, as some are urging, if you include economic considerations in a compelling public interest exception, that the law will not function as it should, and you won't break this relationship. We should not let our society, and I'm intentionally saying "our society" instead of "this industry", because it's all of us. We should not let our society put these neighborhoods in a no-win situation and have to choose between jobs or accepting facilities that pollute and will make them ill and possibly kill them. That's an impossible situation. That's an unconscionable situation. And communities should not be put in that situation. They should not be put in a situation where they're almost being bribed with the promise of jobs. They should not be put in a situation where, in order to get something good, they have to accept something that might kill them. It's not just putting them in a situation that's almost bribery. It's really, it's really putting them in a situation that's extortion. Saying, look, if you want, if you want what other communities have, if you want enough jobs in your neighborhood or more jobs, then you're gonna have to accept this pollution. And we're already talking about how the law works. We're already talking about neighborhoods that have too much pollution already. They should not be, they should not be forced to accept more pollution in exchange for economic good. Government has to provide both. They have to provide good jobs. We all need good jobs. But not jobs that are gonna make them ill. Your stand, the government also needs to provide a good environment for people. This is what the law is doing. This is what you're doing. We applaud you for this. We support you for this. Stay strong. Don't let the economic exception. Government has to come in and provide good jobs also. But it should not, it should not be this unacceptable trade-off. I've used up my time. The exception, we think, going the other way, we think is even too vague. And we'll put that in our written comments. We think it needs to be tightened up so it won't be used too much. And we, and we urge you to stand strong. Don't, don't include economic considerations in the exception, in the compelling public interest exception. And if you do that, then black communities, Latino communities, Asian communities, Native American communities, low-income communities of all types, including, including white folks, will have a chance to have the good environment that other communities have.
Thank you, Dr. Sheets. Stacey Pierce.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Stacey Pierce. I'm the Director of Community Engagement for EMR USA Metal Recycling. I've been with EMR since April, since April of 2019 and am a lifelong Camden resident. In Camden, EMR does employ 522 people, 140 of which are Camden City residents. We currently have 70 open jobs here in Camden. EMR has invested more than $250 million into its Camden facilities during the last five years. This includes cleanup of historic contamination caused by others at the Kane Avenue barge terminal, restoring the abandoned Victor Building into our U.S. headquarters, and building a dismantling facility, My Auto Store, where good parts from end-of-life vehicles are responsibly, responsibly recovered. EMR strongly supports the principles of environmental justice. We believe Camden residents have a right to live, work, and play in a healthy environment. And we strive to be a valued member of the Camden community, where we have operated for over 100 years. We have a long record of participating and holding public meetings and making permit applications available for the community to review. And we have taken significant steps to be a good community partner and to support the Camden community. I wanted to share with you a couple of highlights relative to EMR's efforts to be a good community member. We have provided financial support to Camden, excuse me, to Camden organizations, including but not limited to the Joseph House Seeds of Hope, the Salvation Army Croc Center, the Idea Center for the Arts, the Heart of Camden, and we have shared the holidays with Sacred Heart School. EMR has directly engaged the Camden community by hiring two Camden residents as community liaisons. We are here tonight. That is, again, myself and Will Davis. We have also established a community hotline and email that we've made available 24 hours a day, where concerns can be reported, and also, like I said, including after hours. We are working to establish internships and other career path opportunities for Camden residents, as well as working on affordable housing initiatives for our employees. I am sharing tonight for the first time publicly that the EMR Camden Community Investment Fund is live. And this fund is a nonprofit that will provide major funding to much-needed projects, such as, again, but not limited to, neighborhood beautification and cleanup projects in the city. The fund will be led by a joint board of EMR employees, community stakeholders, and members. We are spending millions of dollars to enclose our shredder in Camden. We will install a system that scrubs and heats any air that moves out of the shredder as it operates, eliminating virtually all airborne particles. Metal recycling is an essential task that reduces climate change. Unfortunately, the proposed rules as written harm EMR's ability to be a community partner. We will later be submitting formal comments with proposed changes. We are dedicated to remaining in Camden and supporting its residents. I appreciate the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. JV Valladolid.
Buenas tardes, JV Valladolid. I am representing Ironbound Community Corporation. I am also a Newark resident. I did hear in tonight's comments that in this rule, some of the fears are that a site or a community would be unattractive. I agree, that's a typical fear of mine as well. The cities that we live in can best be described as having been targeted, unchecked, and unregulated for several decades. A good start is this EJ law that has been fought for for over 12 years. This is asking the bare minimum of institutions and agencies to back up communities, to back up residents, to back up people that are living and working and playing and contributing to the world. The potholes are one. A visual that I'm not sure that anyone is used to unless they are driving, working, or living or playing in a community that has over 4,700 trucks passing in and out every hour, on average, in front of schools, in front of homes, at all moments. A community that is under an airplane that flies overhead every minute and a half. Unattractive, audibly already, unattractive. The unattractive potholes, the unattractive many ways in which these communities are discarded.
The bottom button. Apologies, I think the microphone died. I'll just ask you to, to project, ma'am. Thank you.
It is being recorded on another device.
Yes.
And so this is the bare minimum. There is not really enough patience for someone to expect 30-plus-years-old, generationally, parent after parent of parent who has become sick. And literally statistically, scientifically, and all of the ways and forms in which you can think death, it has happened to them. And so there is no time to wait. And we are grateful that this is happening now in place. And so we are asking for minimum considerations such as the language availability. Where is the outreach? Is it also local government? Is it not just the environmental justice communities that have time and time again had to fight for themselves? All of the communities in partner, we've mentioned churches, we've mentioned schools, mentioned many different agencies. And so the outreach has to be for everyone. The ease of it has to be also available, like I mentioned, in voice memos. And this is the very minimum. We will continue to be fighting for this. We appreciate a start, and we hope for everyone the same. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for the microphone mishap. Brian Horn. Who no longer wants to testify. That is the end of our list of folks who have signed up. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up that would like to offer comments or testimony? Last chance. Yes, sir, please.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Barfield. Born and raised Camden, New Jersey. Past president of the Camden County NWAACP. Number of environmental groups, things throughout the years. And again, this is a great step for this law to take place because, as was mentioned, we have had 167 superfront sites, contaminated sites in these neighborhoods throughout the city. Camden and our children have the highest rate of asthma and hospitalizations in the state. We need checks and balances. And if there's no regulations and no one's saying what needs to be done or what can be done, then the corporations are not going to invest unless there's something that's making them invest. Prime example is just like with Kavanaugh. Kavanaugh, just recently, up until now, because of the community bringing attention to the pollution, the toxins in the air, and the health impact that it's having on the community, now you're putting in bag filters. Right? But this is still three years down the line, the process. But in the meantime, how many years and generations of our children have been impacted by contamination, air quality, and things of that nature? So it's good that an environmental law is in place because then that gives the community, the grassroots, who doesn't have the money, who doesn't have, it's not, because, again, you cannot pit, you should not have put money over life. And this is what this does when corporations are, again, where's the accountability? Because if there's nothing making you guys accountable, then you're not going to improve. And if you're using it that we're ready to leave this state or leave this city or this county because of the investment in a corporation, then that tells you that you're all about the money. You would rather go and, and, and start off with a new facility, which would be upgraded because you're building it new, instead of having these old buildings that you know need to be closed down, such as this incinerator. And then now they want to start dealing with liquid hazardous waste, which is another thing that we have to be concerned about. But within that area, again, there's too many corporations and companies that have been in this area that have been polluting for decades. And our community has suffered behind it. Whole neighborhoods have been disbanded because of the toxins in the air. So this law is definitely needed. Yes, like everything else, things could be improved. But then at the end of the day, something needs to be done. And the community needs something, the average person who doesn't have the money, they need some law that they can stand on, that they can fight for on behalf of their community and their children. And just like with EMR, it's great that EMR is able to do- And just like with EMR, it's great that EMR is able to do the upkeeping that they're doing, but a lot of it has come from the pressure that the community keeps reporting, keeps complaining about the things that are not taking place, the dust, this coming, this flying all over the place. You know, it's a lot that's going on. And I'm not going to sit here and try to go back and forth with the individuals who are, you know, this is their job, and they're here and they want to promote their corporations, they're well and fine. But we know in Camden residents that, yeah, EMR may be one of those companies that's doing better, but then there are a lot of companies that are not hiring, and the majority of people, or even a third of the people that are Camden residents, are not getting these jobs. So, you know, it's not about, oh, we providing jobs. It's still about how are we still providing a healthy environment for the community? It doesn't matter if I got a job if I'm constantly being sick, if my family is being sick. You know what I mean? So at the end of the day, this law is good, and reference it, it's a first step, and the community needs this. I think this is more for the community to have accountability than it is not having nothing at all. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Yes. Wonderful. We don't either. There's word to be heard, we want to hear it.
So I'm Bill Johnson, part of Tri-County Sustainability, the Environmental Justice Committee. So, you know, as we went through this, the rulemaking process, one of the big things was, concerns was enforcement, right? And as I read through this law, I think enforcement is still an issue here. I think this law is a good start. It's a really good start, but I don't think there is, when it comes to enforcement, I'm really worried about that. These communities are overburdened, communities have suffered enough. And why are they overburdened communities? Because our communities and our governments have allowed this to happen. And I would like to see no more building, no more exemptions or anything like that in these communities. They have suffered enough. So, again, this rule state that no exemption can be made for economic benefits. We at Tri-County Sustainability are requesting that no facilities in Camden be given permits for new revenue streams. So thank you for having the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Or go again, of course. Told you I'd give you more time.
For the folk that showed up tonight from towns outside of Camden, I don't want you to leave with the impression that we came here to attack you. I want you to appreciate and fully understand what we live through every day. And anytime you want to do, if you want to see the real Camden and what people are experiencing in Camden, I'll take you on a walking tour. And I'll take you down to Second Street, and from Vincent Street all the way down to Kane Avenue and Ferry Avenue, there's nothing but polluting industries everywhere. It doesn't exist in Cherry Hill. You wouldn't tolerate that in your neighborhood. Your wife would not allow you to sit an incinerator in Cherry Hill. She would divorce you. So we're concerned that we have to speak for ourselves. So I don't want you to leave with the impression that we're here to attack you personally. But we came to lift up justice, environmental justice, and to let you know that pollution affects a person's health, it affects the ability of children to learn, it affects pregnant women, and I want to cite a few things, and I'm going to sit down. But first of all, EMR, in January, there was this massive fire, toxic fire, that inundated a neighborhood. People was breathing in toxic dust. Now, what is the health effect from toxic dust if you breathe it in? You get respiratory problems. You can literally die. So I'm going to read this, and I'll be out of your way. This is an Environmental Protection Agency inventory of Cavanta polluting emissions. And it says this. Cavanta is a trash incinerator. The EPA Commission cited them. Of 43 industries in Camden County, Cavanta incinerator is the number-one industrial air polluter in Camden County. This is the EPA, United States Government. Now, what are they emitting into the air, water and soil? Nitrogen oxide, which triggers chronic diseases and strokes, sulfur dioxide, it creates dizziness and heart attacks, hydrochloric acid, it irritates the eye and nose. Particular matter that comes from diesels, it can produce heart attacks, it can produce strokes. I have been, I have had two strokes. And I was, I thought I was in great health until I fully understood that I live in Camden, not Cherry Hill. Two strokes. The first one could have killed me, the second one could have killed me. God forbid I have a third one. I could be paralyzed. Why? Because I'm inundated with air pollution, water pollution, soil pollution, and the toxic environment that we have to live in, gunfire every weekend, poverty every day, poor people every day. Walk downtown, you'll see how many poor people living in the street, not in Cherry Hill, in Camden. We have to endure this. This is not personal to you. I want you to fully get this. We do support the rules. We want to expand the rules. We thank you for coming out, and we thank our brothers and sisters for coming out tonight because you are our brothers and sisters. So if I get polluted here in Camden, guess what's happening in Cherry Hill? You think pollution just drops in Camden and stays here? No, it affects you too. People out in Cherry Hill having strokes and respiratory problems and asthmatic, why do you think? If you draw the connection between toxic materials in the air and water and soil and your health, it'd surprise you. I'm just going to leave with one other pollution element that Cavanta emits into the air, lead. It damages the nervous system, lowers the IQ of kids, and produces antisocial and aggressive behavior. A lot of kids that get infected with lead will never go to college or complete a vocational degree because at birth, in the womb, their mother was ingesting lead into her system, into her child. Lead. So when the child comes out the womb, she's 20 points behind children that come out of Cherry Hill, 20 points behind. Now, if it's competitive, what do you think 20 points behind, starting out in Camden means versus the young kids that grew up in Cherry Hill in a pristine environment, a really solid environment? Lead can also kill you. These are, there's 14 chemicals that come out of Cavanta's plant that pollute the air, the water, and the soil. This is an EPA fact sheet. 14, from strokes to dizziness to lung cancer, shortness of breath, damage to the nervous system. This is what these polluting facilities are doing to the city of Camden, not to Cherry Hill. So what's good for Cherry Hill should be good for Camden. I want to live a decent life the way you are living. When I drive through Cherry Hill, I'm amazed, seriously, clean streets, people are not hanging out. I don't see any polluting facilities anywhere in Cherry Hill. And I'll leave with this. The regional source treatment plant, which all the towns send their sources to Camden, it means this, 400,000 households in Camden County, each individual going to the bathroom on average twice a day, all of their stool comes to Camden, and we breathe in it.
Thank you, Minister. I'll do one last call. Anyone else? Here you go.
Angel Perez, last name P-E-R-E-Z. I am the co-executive director for the Center for Environmental Transformation located in the Waterfront South section of Camden. I am also a lifelong resident of Camden, New Jersey. I grew up down the street on 18th. So I was running around here when this was a landfill or a forest on top of a landfill, not knowing it. I think the EJ rules are good, they're a great start, something that needed to be done for 12 years. But having the loophole where you put money over lives can't happen. I think that should be really looked at. We have a plethora of industries that emit so many pollutants in Waterfront South. Sometimes we have stores and residents that send their school to Sacred Heart that they're scared to take their young people outside because they see fog, and they have no idea if it's natural fog or pollutants that have been able, had to have condensed and are moving up the street. We have a metal refinery that's had two fires within 18 months, and that they don't want to have a conversation with us. The same exact recycling industry had a fire in Newark. We have a trash steam incinerator that is holding a baghouse over the heads of the community because they want us to, they want us to go along with their business model to allow liquid waste to be incinerated. And if we don't, they won't put it in, even though they've stated they would because it's not going to make a profit. I think that people in Camden, for the longest time, haven't had their futures in their hands. We keep getting dumped on by industry, by government, and it's not only environmental issues, there's so many other issues in the community. The fact is Camden is running the way other people outside of Camden want it to be run. If Camden isn't the way it is, you wouldn't have a Cherry Hill, you wouldn't have a Collingswood, you wouldn't have all those upper echelon communities in this area. That's why Camden gets everything. We get all of the waste, we get all of the trash, we have all of the methadone cleanse, we have all the reabs, we have all the shelters. If we don't run this way, people from outside of Camden can't live their happy, non-polluted lives. And I think it's about time we are able to choose for ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak, including folks who might have come in towards the end of this?
Afternoon, sir? Or evening? Evening, that's right. It's still daylight, but I think it's officially evening.
Timing's not my specialty.
That's all right.
It's not working.
No, that's fine, that's fine. I'll work to protect my voice so folks can hear me, so apologies for those in the front of the room. My name, for the record, is Doug D O U G O'Malley, O apostrophe capital M, A L L E Y. I represent Environment New Jersey, which represents more than 80,000 citizen members across this state, as well as activists for environmental causes. And I wanted to, first off, just to thank the DP for holding multiple public hearings in person around the state. Obviously, the hearings kicked off earlier this week in Trenton. Be here, the CROC Center, and then up to Newark, and then a virtual hearing. Appreciate the multiple opportunities to weigh in, and also the importance of having not only virtual and in-person, but the access for multilingual communities. This is kind of why we're here, to not only maximize public participation, but to make sure that everyone gets an equal shot at having environmental protection. And that's obviously what these rules are designed to do. And there's a very important reason, officer, why we're here in Camden, and we've already heard tonight from members of the community about why Camden has had environmental injustices. And I don't want to kind of repeat those words, but I do think it's important to recognize the legacy of the fight for environmental justice in the city. The last time I was in this building, it was for the funeral of my dear friend Kelly Francis. And Kelly was a lifetime activist for the environment. He was a known institution in the city, and he was an activist for many causes, but certainly the environment was high on that list. And one of the reasons why Kelly had to wage that fight, of course, is because there were environmental justices in Camden. And this is obviously a legacy that goes back for the department for years. I'm making sure that the letter of the law was being enforced, and Assistant Commissioner Lisa Jackson, whether 20 years ago, did an enforcement action here in the city, right? That is obviously important, and over the last 20 years, there have been steps forward on the permitting for facilities in Waterfront South. But as you've heard tonight, and as you've heard previously, the environmental justices that face cities like Camden have been manifest, and even the last two years, over the course of the pandemic, we've seen fires in recycling facilities at Waterfront South, we've seen the Georgia Pacific Gypsum Plant and that permitting process. And all of those permitting processes that occurred have obviously been before these EJ regulations have been put forward. It has been done with the narrow concept of perhaps referencing cumulative impacts, but not having the regulatory ability to look at cumulative impacts. And one of the important questions, obviously, in front of the department right now is what is the full scope that department's able to look at, and specifically the compelling public interest? And what is considered compelling, what's considered to be in the public interest? And we want to reemphasize what you've heard from the environmental justice community and from many folks tonight, is the importance of ensuring that we are not assuming that a compelling public interest is an economic interest. Those are arguments we've heard time and again, whether it be from cement manufacturers in Waterfront South, whether it be from the Cavanta incinerator, which obviously you're just hearing testimony on, whether it be from the recycling center, or for that matter, whether it be for the multitude of other polluting industries that have made their home in Camden. What has not made their home here in the city, of course, is that look at cumulative impacts. And obviously Camden is a microcosm for this broader issue, which the department is incredibly well aware, and that's why we have these rules in front of us. We have seen, as the department is well aware, and perhaps not everyone in this room is well aware, the business community is relitigating their case. They opposed the environmental justice law and was proposed in the legislature, and they have continued and worked to this day to weaken the impacts of the environmental justice law. Because the cumulative impact standard means that you actually are held to account, in the same way the community is held to account, for pollution that's occurring from all sources. And so the Georgia Pacific Gypsum Plant might not be responsible for the other polluting industrial facilities around it, but the permitting around those facilities and similar facilities cannot ignore those cumulative impacts, even though the business community would like to look at those, you know, that singular impact of their plant. You know, the community and the residents of Camden do not have that luxury, and neither should permitting facilities. And that's why it's critical that compelling public interest does not take into account the economic impact. I also would argue, you know, we have a clear argument for public health, and that's why we're looking at cumulative impacts. And Camden, of course, has been a dumping ground, literally and figuratively. And when we think of the conglomeration of highways that surround the city and even the CROC Center, you know, this is a reminder that we are working to repair those environmental justices. We obviously can only do so much. It's hugely important, though, that the first place we're going to see electric buses in the state is right here in the city, obviously referencing the fact that we are on top of a former landfill, and the Kramer Hill Park that just opened is a promise of saying that we actually can undo some of the environmental injustices that have occurred. So that's a reminder of the promise of what the department is trying to accomplish here. We are 100% in support of the EJ law and just want to encourage the department to ensure that compelling public interest looks at the public and not at the business, not at the business community. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Malley. Still about 15 minutes before our time here ends. Does anyone else wish to speak? Last call? Are you coming up again? Okay. All right, we're going to conclude tonight's hearing. I want to thank everyone for their time, for their attention, for their comments, their passion, all of that. Very much appreciate this, and we look forward to seeing you all again soon. Thank you.